Good evening, we call the meeting to order. If everybody would please silence your cell phones. We're having the invocation by our county manager Murd Waldrop and pledged by Commissioner Kelly.
Let us pray. Lord, we want to thank you for the blessings of freedoms and liberties that we enjoy in our country and in our community. Thank you for the rain you sent our way that we need. Thank you for the people of this community that care so much. Forgive us of our many sins. Ask that you give this board wisdom for the decisions they have to make tonight. Ask all these things in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Please stand before the deputy.
Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we adopt the agenda.
Okay, I have a correction I wanted.
That's on the minutes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Second, can somebody say?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor? Shunam's word. Next is approval of the minutes, meeting on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
On page two of the minutes, last sentence, it says, Commissioner Kelly, against, I just wanted to add to this sentence, against the rebidding process. And I spoke with Kathleen about that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, second the motion as amended.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Nick, all in favor? Stamps. Next is the presentation of the county audit financial statements.
Mr. Deel, come on.
Good afternoon. First of all, I just want to thank the commissioners for the opportunity for our firm to serve as your auditors again for this year and to thank Michael Weisman and his staff for providing the information we needed for the audit in all the departments within the county. Hopefully you all have a copy of the financial statements with you. I'm just gonna go through and just point out a few things. Of course, it's an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. The management discussion and analysis starts on page seven. If you read through that, that gives you a really good summary of the financial condition and the financial statement information for the current year, for the fiscal year ended September thirty, twenty twenty-four. If you flip to page eighteen, eighteen and nineteen are the, what's called the government-wide financial statements. There on page eighteen is a government-wide statement of net position and includes all the accounts, all the funds, all the accounts, assets, liabilities for the county on a county-wide basis. The first two columns, one being the governmental activity, the other being the business-type activities. You can see that the county had total cash and investments of approximately a hundred and thirty million at September thirty. Capital assets net of depreciation was approximately ninety-two and a half million. Your total assets for the county at September thirty, twenty twenty-four was two hundred and twenty-eight million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, which was about a twenty-nine point three million, fifteen percent increase from the previous year. Your total liabilities for the county, as you see down the page, there are twenty-seven point seven million in total liabilities. Your total liabilities actually decreased approximately four, four point eight million. Your net position for the county, you see down at the bottom, the total net position was two hundred and five million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand. Your net position increased thirty-one point six million, or about eighteen percent increase in your net position. You see that most of that net position is invested in capital assets, which is not spendable. Your net investment capital assets was ninety-one, ninety-one million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand. Your unrestricted net position was about forty-eight point seven million, which is about twenty-four percent of your net position. The next page is a government-wide statement of activities. It lists the functions of government and the first column lists is the expenses of providing that function of government, including depreciation on capital assets. The next three columns are program revenues directly associated with providing that function of government. And then the fifth column gives you the net cost to provide that service, plus the program revenues, and that's why you have general revenues down below, your property taxes, sales tax, insurance premium tax, and so forth. Your total expenses, including depreciation, you see were sixty point seven million. Total revenue, the program revenues and the general revenue for the governmental activities was ninety-three point two million. You see that the governmental activities down at the bottom transferred eight point one million to the business-type activities for the year. And you can see that the governmental activities had an increase for the year of twenty-four point four million. The business-type activities had a seven point two million dollar increase for the year. And that was with the transfers that came in for those funds. The next page, page twenty, is the governmental funds balance sheet, first column being the general fund. And then you see other major funds. And then the next to last column is the non-major governmental funds. In total, there's a combining financial statements in the back for those. But for the general fund, as you see, they had total assets of a hundred and six point nine million. It had forty-five million due to other funds, primarily because of pooled cash, all the cash investments being within the general fund for all the funds, so it owes back those amounts to the other funds. The fund balance for the general fund was fifty-nine point six million. And that was an increase of twelve point three million, about a twenty-six percent increase in fund balance for the general fund. You can see the fire protection fund had a thirty-eight point two million fund balance. You can see the T-Splosh Fund and then the three Splosh Funds, of course, you have the new Splosh Fund. The total fund balance for all the Splosh Funds was about twenty-three point eight million at September thirty. If you flip to page twenty-two, that's the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance for all the governmental funds. Again, the first column being the general fund. General fund had fifty-two point six million in total revenue. It was actually a small decrease from the prior year, about two percent decrease. You had a lot of interest income with the, with cash and investments, the interest rates being up. You earned a little over five million in interest income for the year. Total expenses, expenditures, you see, were thirty-four point seven million, which was about a four percent, four percent decrease in total expenses. And the third column here is the ARPA fund. You can see that you recognize the ARPA revenue this year, four million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand. That was transferred to the general fund to, for operating purposes, you know, to help cover salaries, which was allowed by ARPA funds. And then you see the Splosh revenue, the old and the Splosh four and the Splosh five, the total Splosh revenue taken in was five million, five hundred and ninety-six thousand for the year. Page twenty-four and twenty-five is the budget versus actual for the general fund. You see the revenues were over budget. Most of all, the departments for expenditures were within budget, except for the sheriff. You see it was five hundred and ninety-eight thousand over budget for the sheriff. And the school resource officers was forty-nine thousand over budget. And then you turn to the page, you know, the total expenditures in total were under budget and your total favorable variance for the budget was fifteen million for the year. Then if you flip to page twenty-eight through thirty, this is the business-type activities. You have three enterprise funds, being the solid waste, the transit, and the broadband utility. Broadband utility is a new fund. It had a construction in progress in the broadband utility fund of around three million. And you also have two internal service funds. It's in total, it's the column there at the last column. That's the vehicle maintenance and the facilities maintenance funds are the two internal service funds. If you flip to the next page, page twenty-nine, that shows the revenues and expenses for these proprietary funds. You see the first column, the solid waste, the, the general fund had to transfer in three point four million into the solid waste fund. And, and then in the transit fund, it had transfers in of three hundred and five thousand, which was from the T-Splosh and the general fund. And then the broadband utility fund, it had four million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand transferred from the general fund. And it had a capital grant from the Board of Education of two million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand to get that fund started. And then after the next couple of statements is the notes to the financial statements, start on page thirty-three. Not going to go in detail of that, but it gives you more information on the financial statements, like the capital assets, notes payable, leases payable, and so forth. And then on pages sixty-three through sixty-six are the special revenue combining funds, that's sixty-three through sixty-six. And those make up most of that total column of the non-major funds in the front part of the financial statements. I'm not going to go in detail on that. And then there's more budget actual versus actual statements for all the special revenue funds and additional required reporting for the custodial funds and so forth. And then the, also this year, with your federal funds, you had more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds, so you had to have what they call a single audit. And the program audited for the single audit was the ARPA program. That was a major program. So there are single audit reports in here also. And then the last thing, a report on internal control and compliance was on page, starts on ninety-three, ninety-four. And then there's the ninety-five is that scheduled expenditures of federal awards. That was mentioned, you had around five million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand in federal awards for the year. And then the one finding we had in the scheduled findings was a repeat finding on the sheriff's department, just lack of internal controls, you know, over expenditures, you know, using good budgetary controls. And I think some new budgetary controls have been put in place since the fiscal year end. I tried to cover a lot of information very quickly, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that anyone might have.
So there's only one finding in the audit?
Yes, sir.
All the departments were in budget and doing well, except for that one finding, which was related to the sheriff's department?
Yes, sir.
Financial, yeah, control was over their budget and spending.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're all required to stay within budget, is my understanding.
Yes, sir, that's what, yeah, the purpose of the budget is. And you're required to disclose in the financials, which we did, when, for departments that go over budget.
Were there any other issues in any other departments that y'all found?
I don't recall.
I don't think there were any. I just, I knew the answer to that question. I just want to brag on the rest of our department heads and staff. They do an excellent job.
The county does a good job and you've got a great finance staff.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Deel.
Appreciate it, thanks, sir. Michael, you got some.
I just would like to commend Richard and his staff. They've had some, some changes when Kay left to go out on her own, but Richard didn't. He could have kicked us to the side, which would have been easy, but he stuck in there with us. His staff did and they, they did a phenomenal job as they always have. And just wanted to say publicly, we sure appreciate it. I recommend his firm to anyone. I know he's busy, but I still would recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
See you, sir. Next on the agenda is a request to turn drug fund account over to the sheriff's office.
Commissioners, we've gotten a request from Sheriff Williams to turn over the drug fund account to the sheriff's office. The account, the process that we currently use was established at the request of the sheriff's office several years ago, which we have a confiscated assets account, which is a trust account. And the funds that are confiscated are held in that account until a judge's order to distribute the funds either to the DA's office, sheriff's office, and occasionally back to an individual whose assets they may have confiscated and need to be returned. But most of the time it goes back to the DA and the sheriff's office. Once that order is given, then the, then we have been placing it in the drug fund. We only use that money as directed by the sheriff. What's the difference now is the sheriff would like to have his own checking account and have control of that account. It would still be public money, it'd still be subject to an audit, and still be subject to open records requests. The public could ask for copies of that. What we've, what we're asking, staff is asking the board to do is to authorize us to close the account. We can't close or open an account without the board's approval. Authorize us to close that account once the sheriff provides us the bank account number where we can transfer the money into and the EIN number that that account's registered to. Are there any questions?
You don't have the account number or EIN yet?
No, we do not have the account number yet. We've, we've asked for that, but he may not have it established yet.
Is there a motion?
We really haven't got a choice here. This is where, the way the law was set up, Adam.
I think the position the county manager has put out is the same one, same inclusion we reached.
All right, I'll make the motion that we do the transfer once the required numbers and account number and employee identification numbers provided.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, seconded by Commissioner Lively, all in favor? Shunam's word. Next on the agenda is acceptance of a mediation settlement in the case of Johnson versus Sheriff Alfonso Williams. So.
Go ahead.
So I know there's people that's called and asked to speak tonight. So I'm going to open up the floor and let people speak if they want to speak. But this is how it's going to work. Five minutes, and then once whoever wants to speak gets through speaking, it's going to be closed. There won't be no more comments, won't be no more questions. And then we're going to talk to the lawyer for the insurance company. When he calls in, he's going to call in. And then, once we get through talking with the lawyer, we're going to discuss what we're going to do in public. We're going to vote on it in public, just so everybody knows. So at this time, if anybody wants to come up and speak, please limit it to five minutes. Because if everybody in this room spoke, we'd be here all night long. So please limit it to five minutes and please be cordial and let's, you know, act like we're supposed to. And please talk in the microphone if you come up and speak.
I know this is a fairly specific thing you're looking at tonight, and I'm going to talk a little more general. I need to talk about the urgent matter. It really strikes to the heart of the community's trust and the very foundation of fair governance in our county. And this is the broader actions of Sheriff Alfonso Williams. As you know, the sheriff has sworn to protect all of us, to uphold the law without bias. However, recent events and clear patterns of behavior, and, and everything I say here is widely reported in the news. I'm not making any of this up, I know you all know that. Demonstrate that none of this is happening in Burke County. Instead, we're witnessing an alarming abuse of power. Let's be very clear about the concerns that are all reported in our local news media. The sheriff is weaponizing the law for political retaliation. Just last week, just last week, we know that he wrote up incident reports on, on the body here. He's filed arrest warrants for, for private citizens. And the alleged reasons, there are oath violations and harassing communications and misdemeanors, and he's putting out bolos for misdemeanors for the first time ever to embarrass people. This is unprecedented and deeply disturbing. As our local media continues to highlight, these actions appear to be direct retaliation for disagreements, particularly over your budget oversight. When the law, when the law is used as a weapon against those who disagree with an elected official, it undermines democracy itself. We are all unsafe because the rule of law is being undermined in Burke County. It's undermined by the very person who is sworn to uphold it. We've seen violations of civil rights and free speech. The issue of warrants against private citizens for harassing communications raises serious First Amendment concerns about our right to free speech. And this isn't an isolated incident. The first time I came up here to speak to you all, it was when the sheriff's office was using their Facebook page to stifle, to stifle dissent and shut people down. And I said it was a civil rights issue at that time, and it was a warning sign for the violations that were going to come. We have an absolute right in the Constitution to criticize our government and our elected officials. I'm not the only one pointing these things out. Our sheriff's office has faced scrutiny from the University of Georgia's First Amendment Clinic. They've been asked to reverse social media bans on, on individual constituents. All, all of these things are violations of citizens' fundamental rights in the Constitution. Our sheriff openly violates the U.S. Constitution. And if we can't trust him to uphold that, how can we trust him to be qualified to uphold any other part of the law? And then you're talking about misuse of public funds and other things as well tonight. Beyond these alarming arrests, local, and warrants and things, local investigative reporting repeatedly raises questions. This body raises questions about the sheriff's handling of taxpayer money. There have been accusations, accusations of mismanagement, nearly a half a million dollars of grants misappropriated. Public record request goes unanswered, they're sealed, there's a lack of transparency and a lack of accountability with our money, public funds. And these are not minor disagreements, these are fundamental breaches of trust, and they're potentially serious violations of state and federal law. These include official oppression, civil rights violations. The very person that's sworn to protect our rights is actively working to suppress our rights. Immediate action is needed. Because this, longer pattern of behavior, the longer this continues, the more damage is being done to the public trust and the stability of our county government. We cannot allow an environment where elected officials and private citizens fear arrest simply because they're doing their jobs or expressing dissent. This creates an atmosphere of intimidation, not one of public safety. So what can we do? The Board of Commissioners has a critical role to play in upholding good governance and protecting the rights of all Burke County citizens. We all need to demand accountability. I know you guys can't do it all, but we need to be seeking support from outside this community. We urge the board to use every single legal pathway available to address these allegations and ensure accountability. We need formal requests from state and federal investigations. We need to protect civil rights at all costs. While this process is unfolding, we must ensure that the civil rights of every citizen in Burke County is absolutely protected. No one should fear retaliation for exercising their constitutional rights or holding their public officials accountable. That's disgusting to think that we're enduring that here in this county. We need to restore trust. The ultimate goal needs to be to restore integrity to the sheriff's office and rebuild the public's trust in the law enforcement body that we need. We, the people of Burke County, deserve leadership, not intimidation. We deserve a sheriff who serves and protects all of us, not one who uses his office to target his opponents. And it's time for immediate action to ensure accountability, transparency, and constitutional governance be fully restored in Burke County. We need the sheriff out of office. How do we get there? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thor. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Okay, if no one else wants to speak, I'm, I'm closing the, closing the floor for this, speaking on this issue right here.
Mr. Britt is ready if the board wants to entertain, ask questions about the settlement agreement. If you want to go in executive session, you can do that. It'd be easier to hear from him there than trying to, because he's got to call in. He's county attorney in Mitchell County, so he's in Camilla tonight. And would be, is ready to call in if you want to, if you have questions about the settlement. I know you're wanting to come back out and discuss, which you really, you should, discuss it and vote out in public. But if you had questions for the attorney that negotiated on behalf of the county, this would be your opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion, we go executive session for the express, express purpose to have a conversation with the defense attorney for the insurance only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, seconded by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor?
FYI, we will be right back in open, just.
That's right.
We just don't know if there's something that we don't need to talk about or say out loud. out loud.[538.04]
Okay.
Executive session, and we discussed with the insurance company attorney, the settlement agreement only. And authorize you to sign that affidavit?
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nix, second by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor. Ms. Mur.
That, uh, the motion they made was just to come out of executive session saying that the only thing they discussed in the executive session was a proposed settlement. They're about to discuss the proposed settlement. And then you'll, yeah, alright, that's it, we'll, yeah, we'll try to make it clear so everybody knows what's going on. You want an explanation from the attorney?
Alright.
So, Mr. Chairman, and, and members of the public, just to explain the position that the board finds themselves in. So, the board's been asked by its insurance provider to consider the settlement of a claim against the sheriff in his individual and official capacity. The claim is brought by Ms. Brenda Johnson. Under the terms of the insurance policy, this body has to consent to settlement. So, this is an issue between a constitutional officer and an individual, but because the Board of Commissioners is the only entity that can purchase insurance, the insurance policy requires them to consent to any settlement agreements. That's why we find ourselves where we do. Uh, the insurance pol-, the insurer provided a defense counsel who has been representing the county in this case. The purpose of the executive session was to confer with defense counsel about the details. Specifically now, the Board of Commissioners will consider, uh, the proposal there, but remember, they are only in the position of consenting to the agreement. They don't have any direction of the constitutional officers, including the sheriff. Uh, they can make comments as they want to about the, the facts and the positions they are regarding how we got here and where we're going, but specifically, their only role in this is to consent to the agreement. I also want to be clear, constitutional officers, they don't have their own budgets. They are beholden to the taxpayers, or maybe vice versa, right? And in this position, when the Board of Commissioners makes decisions, uh, they are obligating your funds, but they themselves can't, cannot direct the actions. So, unfortunately, they find themselves as the, the holder of the purse without being able to direct exactly what happened. So, um, specifically, I'll answer any questions that the, the board may have, but I do want to be very clear, this is a proposed settlement. Uh, there are certain terms regarding, uh, how parties reach settlement. Uh, we cannot get into great details because we only consent. If this body consents, that is no guarantee that the parties, both the sheriff and the plaintiff were to agree, but until this body agrees, those agreements, uh, cannot move forward.
With that being said, the general public, whether we consent or we do not consent, if we consent, y'all will be made aware, it will be to, open to public records. So, you will know what was done, how it was done. Me personally, I'm conflicted because of what's financially right for the county and what's morally wrong for the county. So, I'm torn on which way to go, because you're sitting out here, you're my taxpayers, you're my, you're, uh, my voters. We got twenty, roughly twenty-six thousand of you guys. We see about a hundred and twenty-five of you here right now. And I am absolutely torn on which way to go, because this is not an easy decision for us to make. But at this point, we have to make a decision, one way or the other. Unfortunately, some people be happy, some won't. I really, at this point, don't know which way to go.
And, and it is a, a really tough position that we're in. You know, we can't talk about what's in the settlement, but once, uh, is either consented to or not, once the party has signed the agreement, everything will be open. And some of, uh, most of this has already been released to the media over the course of the last, uh, three years or so. So, and the settlement will be open to the public at that point in time. If we do not consent, this could cost a taxpayer several million dollars. So, as a fiduciary, we, we've gotta be reasonable in how much it will cost. So, if this goes to court, the lawyers' fees on both sides will be extreme, and the settlement that may come from a court would be ten or twenty times what this is. That's kinda where I am, and it, it does give us a, quite a confliction on holding somebody accountable, but yet, we're responsible to the taxpayers and, you know, the mileage rates and what we have coming in to be able to pay bills. So, that's a big, big thing, and it, it's, it's, it's not a good place to be.
This, this commission body is always referencing saving the county money, saving our taxpayers' money, but if we go to court, we have the court costs, the lawyer fees, and possible settlement increases. Those are some of the things that we're looking at also.
In my, my point of view, in, in this settlement agreement that we voting on tonight, the sheriff maintains his innocent. He denies all allegations. So, we're voting to settle something when, when he says he's innocent.
Well, again, to reiterate what everybody said, it's a very tough decision, um, I don't, I, I, we can't say into the future, so we will not know what's correct until year two, three down the road. However, we have to take the circumstances and, and the, 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 the things that we know that are true, um, and the things that we can see right here in front of us. Do we think there may be ten more lawsuits to come? Possibly. Do we think the settlement may be larger than it is now? Possibly. But, again, if, if he's proven innocent, we'll pay lawyers' fees and there may be no restitution. So, if y'all have ever thought that the trash can decision was hard, this one here is pretty dang um tough. I've had more calls today and in the past three or four days urging me to go one way. There's been, there's been, it's, it's one hundred percent what the people in this room and in this community have called me and asked me to do. But, again, knowing things that most people don't know and, and, and going through the processes that, that y'all are unaware of, as far as the contacts we've made and the things we've tried to do with this whole situation and the sheriff situation in general. Um, it consumes our staff, it consumes the decisions that we make, and it's unfortunate for you because you bear the punishment, um, a- as a taxpayer. Whether it be financial burden, or whether we, whether it be, we can't focus on certain other needs. However, I guess that's just my two cents for what it's worth. But I appreciate all of y'all being here, this is what makes this work better. People out here showing their, their support or their non-support for what we're trying to do and the decision we're trying to make, and I thank y'all for being here.
Can I say something? I'd like just to ask, when is enough is enough? When somebody got to jump off the downside, so that two years from now, we're not in the same position, sitting up our hand high, it's like, this gonna bust a fortune. And maybe, I mean, this smart few words that you gather for your, do we need to bust it, the governor? Say, I don't understand that. That's my point. I mean, I understand the problem, but we gotta get to a solution. Could this gonna come again, based on what I see?
Well, well, again, the things that I was speaking of that y'all may not know about, we've been in contact with the Attorney General, the Governor, um, our representatives. It does not hurt for each of y'all to call them, but we are certainly leaning on tho- tho- those people. Um, I mean, the Governor himself has been contacted by the Chairman and our staff three times that I'm aware of in the last two weeks. So, we're, we're doing those things that you may not see.
We need a bigger group going to the government. Point is, we gotta do something.
For sure, for sure. Call, call, call your representative and your senators, your local representative and your senators. They can, they can help us get to the Governor quicker.
What's your insurance deductible for this case?
That's something that we can disclose.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, so what's, uh, the insurance on the hook for versus what on the taxpayer's on the hook for?
Okay, that's a better question, because the deductible is not necessarily the, the same issue, because there's, how much is being cut, the limits on coverage are the other issue.
We can disclose the deductible, but not the second piece of that, that's a fair statement. So, the deductible at this time was ten thousand, is currently seventy-five thousand, but at this time of this claim, it was ten thousand.
Yeah, our deductibles have increased because of foolishness, Michael, around the county.
Can we disclose the total amount or rough, or, or a number of some sort?
No, that's what he told us earlier.
Of what the county's on the hook for.
Once it's settled, it's all open records.
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to the county attorney there.
Just, just to your point, Commissioner, again, I wanna make sure everybody understands, we, the Board, the Board of Commissioners, we are responsible for the debts, the torts, the contract claims of constitutional officers. We can't direct them, but you are responsible for them, you Burke County taxpayers. We are attempting to negotiate a settlement, and the only reason that this board is involved is because we're the ones who buy the insurance, and we're the ones who, under that insurance policy, have to consent. The parties to these, this agreement have not yet agreed. So, to the extent that we provide information about the agreement, obviously, especially the details on the, on our side of it, it may impact the ability of those parties to reach settlement. So, to the extent that if we are interested in consenting to this agreement, unfortunately, we are somewhat restrained in the information we can provide about the terms of the agreement. But I also want to be very clear, Georgia law, uh, provides very little cover for what we do as officials. And anything that's done will be subject to the Open Records Act. We have no ability to contract away from that. So, unfortunately, we, again, I wanna be very clear, the only reason this body's involved is because the insurance policy that we have requires us to consent prior to a settlement being entered into.
So, there's, um, we've been advised by the attorney representing our insurance to not, um, discuss the, the details on the terms. However, it is a public record.
Until it's signed.
Well, I don't even know if it's, once this board votes one way or the other, then you're voting on a document that would be a public record.
Once, but once it's assigned, is when they said it would be open subject to all open records.
Eventually, it will all, yeah, yeah. I, I just don't know why we don't let the public know, you know, what they're on the hook for. Because that's, you know, yeah, I'm, you know, yeah.
I'm gonna say this, I think I'm gonna make a motion on the moral of denying the, the settlement for Brenda Johnson and Alfonso Weems.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner Brazel, second by Commissioner Lively, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agendas, next on the agenda is the approval of the SRO agreement with the Board of Education and the Sheriff's Office.
Commissioners, we have, uh, gone back and forth with the school board, and they have agreed to the terms we requested where they would be responsible for the full cost of the SROs. So, they have, uh, and they have approved the agreement at their meeting, um, two weeks ago.
Chairman, I make the motion, we approve the new SRO agreement taking effect July first.
I'll say. Motion made by Commissioner Nix, second by Commissioner Lively, all in favor? Next is a public hearing on abandonment of Cleveland Drive.
So, this is a public hearing, there, uh, we have, um, we've had a request from Victoria Boyd to close Cleveland Drive. Um, we've sent notices out to the affected property owners, posted it in the, in the paper. So, it is a public hearing, I would recommend you hear from the parties that are in favor of closing it first, and then if there's anybody that's against closing it, hear from them, and then close the public hearing, then make your decision.
Is there any parties here in favor of closing it?
Typically, it would be the, the party that's doing the, making the request would, would present their reasons for closing it.
Good evening, and thank you all so much for this opportunity to address you again after, um, two years. I would like to present some photos to you guys, if that's okay? And you can pass them out, so you guys can see them? Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the entrance of Cleveland Drive at Cape Town. These were, where the fence posts were being put up on Cleveland Drive to protect our property line, and they were taken up by the county. That's on the backside. These are photos of, you know, when we had, um, vehicles coming through our private property. You know, there was construction going on, fifty-six. And those are just showing that there were more road closure signs.
Thank you.
Okay, with all due respect, I was always under the impression, I'm Victoria Boyd. I was always under the impression that, as elected officials, you are here to ensure the safety and welfare of your constituents. It concerns me that we have had to go through such extenuating and extensive circumstances to ensure property that rightfully belongs to us is deemed as such. Cleveland Private Drive. Merv Waldrop, County Administrator, advised us the process of the process, and we, as law-abiding citizens, tried to adhere, only to be met with resistance directly from him. After a failed attempt trying to make a public spectacle of my family's name and my great-great-grandfather's legacy, he had Judge Craig place an injunction on our private property and unlawfully remove fence post, we said to protect our yards from the roadway extending outward farther and farther into our yards. Merv Waldrop even tried to order the buses not to pick our children up in the midst of the Merv Waldrop even tried to order the buses not to pick our children up in the midst of the school year twenty-twenty-three. This has been going on extremely too long. Many other Burke County residents that have requested that you maintain their property, they have been denied. And we're having to consistently combat the county, per Merv Waldrop's instruction, not to maintain our private property, Cleveland Private Drive. I once again respectfully ask that you all abandon Cleveland Private Drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also know that you all pulled the records and you know that the owners, I am, myself, Victoria Boyd, Ronnie Boyd, and Teresa Boyd own that property. There are two acres that are on the inside of that property that belong to my uncle, my late Uncle Robert Lee and his wife, Dorita Boyd. I do have a signed, um, notice to the Board of Commissioners from the family members of, of the heirs of late, uh, of our late, my late Uncle Robert Lee and Dorita Boyd, saying that they would also like the road to be private, Cleveland Private Drive.
Thank you.
Any of the family members that do, that are part of that, and they, they will have access to their property. They will have access to their property. It just will not be open to the public. But they will have access to their property, but the public will not have access. It is a private drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me clarify one thing pretty quick. Merv Waldrop doesn't make these decisions. He works for this board, and this board advises him how to handle things. I don't know how that's so difficult for people to understand in this community, but we had the same conversation with the Sheriff's Department today.
I will say this.
We, we advise him what to do. This road has been a fiasco from day one, but, but the stunts y'all have done.
Maybe that's a part of the corruption, because it was advised to us that whenever.
Corruption on a dirt road.
Hold on, let me, I just want to say one thing to, uh, the board and to Mr. Lively. Imagine, just imagine, your great-great-great-grandfather left you some property, you and your family. And the county, the, the county commissioners tried to take over your family property, because this is what has happened.
Do you think we have a game from this road?
Well, why, why not close it? It's private property.
Because it's been open for so long.
No, 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 no. No, you misunderstood.
I'm sorry.
You, you, see, you don't have the full facts.
Thank you.
That road is a part of the private property that we inherited from our great-great-grandfather. As I told you guys two years ago, that road is also a road that my mother, my brother, our children, just like your property. Your property that you live on, the boundaries around your house, that property, that road is the boundaries around our homes. This is a, a dirt road, it's a private drive that our children ride their bikes on, that our parents walk the roads, my brother walks the roads, and to have public vehicles driving through our private property, driving thirty, forty, fifty miles per hour, how would you feel? How would any of you feel if you had inherited land from your ancestors and somebody just took it upon themselves to say, it's open to the public? How would you feel if I took my car and started driving it down your driveway? It's trespassing. This land belongs to the family. It doesn't belong to the public. It's just like if you have three acres and you have a driveway, and then I decide I want to drive down your driveway. I don't have a right to do that, nor does any of the public have a right to do that on our private property that we inherited from our forefathers.
Have you taken up trespassing with the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, yes. He knows it's private. The sheriff said it's a private drive.
So has anyone been arrested for trespassing?
No, but he did tell us that nobody could, could come to, through there, that they don't have a right to come through there. We went through this back and forth with when Highway fifty-six was closed. And we had people driving through in eighteen-wheelers, we had people driving through in trucks, we had people driving through like it was a two-lane highway. And, right, we have the incident reports.
And we have one that was as recent as two weeks ago.
Right.
Ms. Boyd, I'm gonna hear from the other side, okay?
Okay, I just want you all to just think about that.
All right.
If you inherited land from your forefathers, your ancestors, would you want anybody just driving up through your driveway? Because this is exactly what that, this is.
Okay, thank you. Uh, who's opposing?
Good afternoon. I'm Robbie Boyd Jenkins. Commissioners, I come to you with respect and humbleness. On June the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, I attended a public hearing held the Burke County Commissioners' panel board. One of the general topics were disgusting, disgusting regarding closing public, and it's not a private drive. It's a public road. They just named it, they're making their own name. It said, closing, uh, public road, Cleveland Drive. Cleveland Drive is an accessory dirt road that runs through the Allen-Boydic State, which involved, which was involved in a litigation with the Burke County Circuit Court over its status as air property. And during that time, the pictures that they showing you, it was under litigation. And, uh, those poles should not have been planted there. That's why Judge Craig ordered the policemen to go out and pull those poles up at that time. Cleveland Drive is a through front that connects, connects with Kate Mead Road to Highway eighty. It is frequently utilized by school buses, public safety vehicles, family members, and the general public. On June the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Commissioner Panel Board of Burke County, before the public hearing was over, Victoria Boyd, Cassandra Boyd, Range, and their peers left the hearing with a unanimous vote to keep the road, Cleveland Drive, as a public road status. They left the courtroom shortly after the panel made their decision. Cleveland Drive was damaged the same day before the sunset. They did not respect the decision of the Commissioner Panel Board, the leadership of the rule of law. It said around February, March twenty-five, uh, twenty-twenty-five timeframe. Uh, wait, wait, hold on.
I, I didn't let you talk, I'm letting her talk.
That's right, I got the floor, I got the floor. It said March, it said February, March twenty-twenty-five timeframe. It was told to me that Victoria went to the Office of Barring Associate LLC. They helped purchase the Allen-Boydic State through that. It said trying to get them to train, change the D's, Cleveland Drive Road, from a public road to a private road. It was advised to them to get legal assistance is highly recommended. It said that is what called trying to undermine the legal system. All the pictures and the videos has been shown by Victoria Boyd. It said to the Burke County Commission Panel, I wonder have she shown you the YouTube video called Neighbors From Hell trying to run over our children? It said the Burke County Sheriff Department was involved, the road was blocked, the driver of the vehicle was driving with suspended license. It said my children was traumatized. It said, just what if that tree had not been there that she hit? It said also, nothing has been done about this situation. Also, officers of the Sheriff's Department was hurt as well. It said it, it is also two sides to every story. All of this happened on Cre- Cleveland Drive. Vi- uh, Victoria Boyd is even in that video.
Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Jenkins.
Yes, sir.
We, we familiar with this road. I, I, I done heard both sides. We done heard it before.
Okay.
So I, I got you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman, I do have one question from Merv.
All right.
So how, how did, do you know exactly how this one became a county road? I understand it was before the year two thousand, that it was, the family requested it to be a public road.
No, we never, we never request.
At some point, yeah, I guess the public hearing is closed at this point. We need to make that clear.
It is, it is.
So no more public discussions.
But can I just make one alibi?
No, ma'am.
Just one alibi. Robbie Boyd Burke no longer has any interest in that property.
Okay, we noted that.
We gotta go back to when it was made public. That's where everything starts.
All right. Uh, Commissioners, at some point, the family asked the county to scrape the road, before my time. But the county's been scraping that road for years and maintaining the road. At that point, it's the public, it's a, becomes a county road by prescription. The public has a right, because the public's resources have been scraping that road, public has a right to use it. How, and once the county has, is responsible for maintenance on it, we have not only a, a, ability to, we have a responsibility to keep it maintained, because we've touched it. Once we touch it, it becomes a public road. Most of our dirt roads are not, we don't have right-of-way on them. They're prescriptive. And the county has been working them for years, and the public has a right to use it because the county maintains the road. We have a right, a responsibility to maintain the road.
As.
So in, um, twenty-twenty, uh, two thousand and three, there were a lot of roads that were prescriptive that the county had been working, and the board accepted these roads officially onto the county road system.
That was in two thousand and two.
Two thousand and three, I think. It was April two thousand and three.
As we.
And this was one of the roads that the county, uh, accepted. Now, recently, there's been interference, um, when we tried to grade the roads. We've got motor grader.
Tried to raid.
And there are individuals just sitting out there blocking the road, not only Cleveland Drive, but Boyd Lane as well. And our motor grader operators had, they pulled off, because they, we had a new operator, and he was scared, he was, yeah, for, yeah, that somebody was gonna, somebody pulling out in front of him, somebody's gonna do something crazy, and so he had, he got out of the way. I just want to let y'all know what's going on.
As we explained whenever we first.
We already had the public hearing.
But we have to express this, because you don't understand.
We do understand.
We done heard.
You didn't hear.
Yeah, we did.
We just didn't hear, you think we didn't hear, we heard, and we're gonna take action, but it ain't gonna be to close the road.
Is there a motion?
I vote we leave the road open. Ma'am, we're done, we're done with the public comment.
Commissioner, is there a motion?
I made a motion.
Ma'am.
Oh, oh, no motion.
There's no motion? Okay, so there's no action.
Next on the agenda is an update from Comcast broadband. Colonel Webster, can you handle this? Colonel Webster, can you handle this? You're a higher ranking police official in here.
All right.
That's your prerogative.
Next item is.
Comcast, Ms. Hillary. Ms. Hillary.
Ma'am. Ma'am.
Nobody made a motion, nothing's happening.
No, I've, I've called the next person on the agenda. Next on the agenda is update on broadband. Ms. Hillary?
She was here.
Colonel, thank you for your, your help.
Welcome.
Y'all sure you want to be in Burke County?
Yeah.
Please give us some good news on, on the broadband.
I hope so. Good evening. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Hillary Heseltine Cameron, manager of Government and Regulatory Affairs for Comcast, and I proudly support all of the CSRA. I'm here to share some, I'm here to share with you all some progress updates regarding our broadband expansion project for all of Burke County. After beginning construction in May of twenty-twenty-four, we are excited to announce that we have successfully completed forty percent of this expansion project so far, providing Comcast Xfinity Services to over thirteen hundred new homes and businesses all throughout Burke County. By the end of this month, June of twenty-twenty-five, we will have over one thousand eight hundred and ninety-one homes and businesses serviceable and eligible to sign up for Comcast Xfinity Services. To continue our progress, our construction crews will work where we have all our permits approved and large locates completed. In receiving these permit approvals in a timely manner, our goal is to complete this project by first quarter of twenty-twenty-six, providing our services to over four thousand seven hundred locations. We appreciate the continued partnership with the county and the neighboring jurisdictions as we continue to work together in the most effective and efficient way possible to continue bringing the power of the internet to your constituents, businesses, and community anchor institutions. In addition to the broadband expansion project, I would love to continue efforts in partnering with local nonprofit organizations, community centers, and any other organizations that you would recommend that may be providing or interested in providing digital literacy trainings. As we have several programs I would love to try to bring to the area, I will send a follow-up email regarding all of that information for you. So thank you for your time today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
I want to thank you for helping me when I have questions from citizens. You, you've responded to my emails and responded to them and helped out and made contact with them, and I appreciate that.
I, I do have one, the forty percent number is lying laid, or is that customers attached?
Those are customers that are, they are constituents able to sign up for services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the bid award for the, uh, HVAC for the library rooftop.
All right. Josh, you got a recommendation. While you're coming, uh, we opened bids last week for a new library, a new HVAC unit at the library. We got three bids. I think C.D. White was the low bid of the three.
Yep, that's correct, and I recommend going with C.D. White. They were, uh, they bid to spec, so everything looked good there.
Chairman, I make a motion, we accept, uh, C.D. White's bid. I will say that all the bids are less than two thousand dollars apart, so.
That's right. Yep, all are very competitive and also under budget for what we had this fiscal year, so.
I second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Brazel, all in favor? Next is a bid board for basketball courts for the Recreation Department.
Commissioners, we opened bids last week on, uh, new basketball courts for the Recreation Department. There were, looks like seven or so bid, bidders on it. Um, the low bidder was Founder's Maintenance out of Savannah. Um, Mr. Woski, have you had a chance to review those bids?
I have, and, uh, they. They do meet specs, and, uh, I do recommend them. Their, um, subcontractor is actually Courtmakers, and they're out of Atlanta, and that's what they do for a living, is, uh, build basketball courts, pickleball courts. Um, they do it for universities, other record departments and high schools and stuff like that, so they do meet the specs.
All right, and this would be, uh, building new courts over next to the gym.
Correct.
At Citizens Park.
And I recommend the, we do go ahead and get the lights for it.
With the lights, yeah, the, the price without lights, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, four ninety-one, with lights, one fifty-eight, four ninety-one. And it's, um, we've had the funds available in the budget, the right departments.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept a bid for the basketball courts for Founder's Maintenance in Savannah, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept a bid for the basketball courts for Founders Maintenance in Savannah, Georgia with the lights.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner Brazel, second by Commissioner Lively, all in favor? Ms. Merv. Next is a bid award for pickleball courts for Recreation Department.
We've had, um, last week, we opened bids and, uh, for new pickleball courts. This would be, uh, adjacent to the Family Wine, that, there, that property there. Um, the low bidder was Founders Maintenance, but I think there are some concerns about the location and the timing. It may, um, I guess first, uh, did Founders, do they meet the specs?
They do meet the specs. Once again, it's, uh, Courtmakers is their subcontractor.
But now, Merv, this had significant amount of work for the county to do, right?
It would require.
That's a wetland area.
It's a, it's a low area, would require the road department to do some work, um.
But not a little bit, a significant amount of work.
No, both of them, um, both locations actually require us to do some site planning, site work. There's already a concrete walkway and pathway down there, so we're gonna use the existing pathway. And then, we're just gonna bring up and come to that, and they're gonna connect the, their concrete to that pathway, uh, as part of this bid.
But in lieu of what we got going on with Cobb Road, Gerard, is that can we put this, keep this money in, approve it? But keep the money in and do it maybe in next fiscal year?
Yeah, why don't we table it? Let us go back to Founders and see if they'll hold their price for ninety days or six months. And then, by that six months, we'll be in the next budget year. Ninety days will be in the next budget year.
I mean, we talking three months. We got to give them some time to get caught up from the hurricane with some cover pipes and things.
Well, Ron and I met out there and discussed it, and, um, he can come up here and talk about that, but if that's y'all's wish, then.
So, Steven, is there some kind of discrepancy in getting the work done and not getting it done? Or Ron helping, or is too much going on? What, what's going on?
When Ron and I discussed, he had come up here.
Yeah.
Uh, he said that it wouldn't take him very long to, to knock it out and do it, so.
Basketball court wouldn't take long at all, but the pickleball court now, with all this stuff, like I said, with all this stuff that's adding up on me right now, if we can pause it for a little bit until I get caught up.
Well, well, I think some of the concerns was Ms. Terry's roads or, in her district, out off of trying to finalize and finish some things. And not necessarily, we ain't gotta wait six months, but tailoring it and, and try to let Paul and him get caught up with some things. And I think there's some concerns with, uh, the ground, um, different things. I'm not saying it's not the good spot, we gotta make sure that's where it's gonna fit, is my understanding, and if I'm wrong, somebody correct me.
Yeah, I have to get over there to grade and stuff like that, and get them on turf, um, do.
We just want to finish some projects before we have ten more open or two or three more open. We, we still got roads to pave, we still got roads to, to put rock on.
But we still have the funds, we do have the funds.
Yeah, they'll stay there.
Right, we can carry that over into the next fiscal year. We may have to, if it's, you know, two sixty-eight, we may have to add some to it anyway in the next fiscal year.
I'll reach out to Founders, see how long they'll keep their quote.
Yeah.
And, uh, let you know back on that.
Yeah, if they could hold it ninety days.
So, my motion is to table.
Okay.
Second. Thank y'all. Next is approval of Class A beer and wine for consumption on the premises and Class C distilled spirits for the consumption on premises for Terrence Wheeler Scott at sixty-one thirty Story Mill Road.
Alright, Mr. Terrence Scott is applying for, um, alcohol license for the Applewood Golf Course. Uh, his background check comes in clean, the location meets all the distance requirements. Um, the, the county ordinance allows for, um, distilled spirits and, uh, beer and wine to be sold for consumption on premises at golf courses.
Oh, Merv, do they not have a license at this time?
Think it's in somebody else's name.
It's changing names.
Right, there's a new owner and changing names for the license.
Yep.
And that's one of the things our ordinance requires, a, a new license when you get a new, because we license the person more than the site.
I make a motion we approve the beer and wine consumption premises C for Apple White.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Lively, second by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor? All opposed?
Correction, Applewood, apologize.
Yeah, Applewood. All in favor? All opposed?
Okay.
Next is the first reading of ordinance twenty-five dash oh-one, establishing road closure procedures.
Um, last month, the board discussed, uh, road closing procedures. Um, we have put that in the form of a, of county code. It would require, uh, filing a petition plus a fee of two hundred dollars when there's a request to close a county road. This would be first reading, uh, would require a second reading before it would take effect. I don't know if the board has any questions.
Would, did we put it on websites so everybody can look at it?
Um, we will. I don't know that we have it out there yet. We've got it, we'll, I'll make sure we do that.
Is there a motion on the first reading?
Do we motion on the first reading?
Right, yeah, you, you vote on.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-five dash oh-one, which establishes procedures to close a public road.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Lively, all in favor? Next is request for Burke County Health Foundation for the use of the Office Park.
The, we've got a letter from the Health Department or the Burke County, on behalf of the Burke County Health Foundation. They have an event coming up November eighteenth to raise, uh, funds for the Health Foundation. They've asked for use of the Office Park for the board to waive the fees for that, that event.
I make a motion that we waive the fees for the November eighteenth, uh, use at Office Park by the Burke Health Foundation.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor? Ms. Merv.
Alright.
Next, a renewal of lease for Veteran Services Offices.
The State Properties Commission would like to renew its lease for the Veteran Services Office that's at the County Office Park. Uh, the fee, the rental is two hundred sixty dollars per month, which covers utilities, that's about, you know. But it leased is, is much better than it was several years ago. We're not trying to make money off of them, but just at least cover our expenses.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we renew the lease of the park with the Veteran Services Office.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor?
Thank you.
Next is the contract with Greater Clark Hill Regional Library.
Commissioners, the, um, Greater Clark Hill Regional Library may be on its last six months. Um, the organization is, it appears to be dissolving. However, um, Columbia County's still in it until the end of the year. Um, the, our library board has met and has recommended that we stay with Clark Hill Region to the end of the year through December. Fund, state funding comes through the region that's channeled back to the, to Burke County and to our library. Um, by December or by January first, we'll need to find a new landing spot, either to be independent or a part of another, another region. And we've talked to several counties around, when, and the library board are working on that as well.
I'm on the library board, and we all agree that we should remain July thirty-first through, sign the contract for July thirty-first to December thirty-first with the Greater Clark's Hill. Definitely for budgetary reasons, then all our funding is still with Greater Clark's Hill, and we will still receive that funding through the thirty-first of December. And we are moving forward by meeting with the surrounding, well, we have a meeting on the twenty-third with chairmen of the li- library board and state, someone from the state is coming down also. After that, then we have different scenarios of who we can partner with better that fits our need once we get through with this initial meeting. And then, we have another meeting with the prospective individuals that say, okay, yeah, we want to partner with you. But, uh, this takes time, so we want us to remain under this contract.
Sounds good. This agreement buys us six months' time to, to figure out where we're gonna land.
Is there a motion?
I move that we assign or adopt the contract with Greater Clark's Hill Regional Library from July thirty-first, no, July first to December thirty-first.
I second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, second by Commissioner Brazel, all in favor? Ms. Merv. Next is fill an expired term on the DFAX Board.
Um, Monica Peyton's term is, will expire the end of this month. Um, the board needs to find a replacement, but I think there's some conflict because of her employment with the school system.
Right, so I had nominated Monica, and, um, after further discussion with the DFAX Board, then, um, it, it's a conflict of interest. So, I'm recommending Roger Gilchrist. He's a retired individual from Club Car. He lives, he's always lived in Burke County, has, um, Burke County's interests at heart. So, I recommend Roger Gilchrist.
Veronica?
Roger.
Roger, okay. I second the motion for Roger Gilchrist to, uh, serve on the DFAX Board.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, second by Commissioner Nick, all in favor? Ms. Merv.
Alright, thank you.
Next, a request to fill light equipment operator and heavy equipment operator positions for the road department.
We have, um, several opening posi- openings that the road department, uh, run. Our public works director's asking to fill those positions. We just need to advertise and fill. He's got some folks that are ready to move to different positions within, in the organization. Um, but, um, we bring these to you to let, just to get the board's approval to make sure that there's money in the budget before we advertise and fill a vacancy.
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, uh, road department to fill a light equipment operator and a heavy equipment operator, be able to post and fill the jobs, provided his budget will hold.
Right.
Budget holds it.
Right, the budget does.
So, I make that motion.
I second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Brazel, all in favor?
Thank you.
Next is request to fill supply clerk, clerk position at the EMA.
Uh, EMA Director has a supply clerk that is, um, retiring. He's asking for permission to fill this vacant position.
And we have the funds in the budget.
We do have the funds in the budget.
Chairman, I make the motion that we fill the, uh, clerk position at the EMA. I authorize the chief to fill the position.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Brazel, all in favor? Next is a request to fill two seasonal recre- recreation aid positions at the Recreation Department.
Uh, the Recreation Department's asking for two s- part-time recreation aids. There are funds available in the budget for this.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve to fill the, uh, two seasonal positions at the Rec Department.
I second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Brazel, all in favor? Ms. Merv.
Alright.
Next is a request to advertise and fill a vacancy dispatcher position for E nine-one-one.
We have, uh, resignation at nine-one-one, and so Director Silas is asking for permission to advertise and fill that vacancy. Funds are available in the budget.
Chairman, I make the motion that we allow the nine-one-one director to fill the vacant position.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Brazel, all in favor? Ms. Merv. Next is a budget amendment for Senior Center Recreation Grant.
I'm gonna let our finance director tell us about this one.
Our senior center director, Kim Mathis, uh, went out last year and got a federal funds grant with no match, and they, they were able to use that grant for a specific, for senior recreation. They bought games and prizes, uh, for things like bingo and et cetera, also took a trip to Savannah. She was able to acquire another one for ten thousand dollars this year. They've already taken a trip to, uh, the Gusta Green Jackets, um, and they are planning, uh, apparently the seniors liked the trip to Savannah. They're planning a trip to Savannah. So, we believe that there would be enough funding here to cover that trip, uh, plus the green jackets with no county match.
Is there a motion?
I mo- I move that we amend the budget for the Senior Center Recreation Grant.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, second by Commissioner Lively, all in favor? Ms. Merv. Next is a budget amendment for hurricane debris removal.
We're getting very close. In fact, uh, this week should be the last week for the debris haulers. Then, they'll be closing out their sites and be out of the county by the end of June. But, um, we are getting close to, or we're at twenty million, a little over twenty million in our total hurricane relief expenses.
We're increasing it to twenty-four million. We, we think it may not be quite that much, but I'm trying not to come back to you again after, after the fact. So, I believe this will be at least enough, um, to, to make sure everything is taken care of by the end of this week, and we'll get all the bills paid. We're up to date, by the way.
Michael, what's the total so far we've received from FEMA and GEMA?
We've received approximately six million in total. We believe we're, we're on target.
We had another seven million that was, we signed off on last week, um, that's going through FEMA and GEMA, so that should be coming shortly, and then, we're still waiting on another seven million or so.
Correct.
This already, paperwork's done and processed, we're just waiting on payment.
The, the seven million now, the paperwork's been processed. The, the rest of it, we're still, I meet with FEMA tomorrow.
Okay.
To try to get the rest, and we will, eventually we'll get it. Now, it's just, it is a very slow process, and GEMA's not, doesn't have the staff to handle, they're overwhelmed with everything too.
We've done pretty well, because in the past, we've had some, uh, uh, events like, not this size, obviously, but that have taken a year. So, we've done pretty well to get this far.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve a budget amendment for the hurricane, uh, budget amendment to a max of, uh, uh, twenty-four million.
I'll second. Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Lively, all in favor? Ms. Merv.
Okay, thank you.
Next is a budget amendment, indirect cost allocations for May of twenty-twenty-five.
It's just our monthly costs. Uh, vehicle maintenance for the shop was ninety-seven, four forty-one, and facilities maintenance along with information technology, one forty-seven, five eighty-nine. Just need a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the total budget amendment, hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents for, uh, inter-service agreements there.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor? Ms. Merv.
I think we got a few folks that have signed up to speak.
One is Ms. Robbie Boyd Jenkins, we've heard from her. Next was Nathan Ford, I think we heard from him, and Mr. James Cole.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I bring you tonight some good news, and, uh, the good news is, uh, the ABCs for someone coming to salvation. First, the A, admit or acknowledge that you are a sinner. This means recognizing that you have fallen short of God's perfect standards and that sin separates you from Him. Romans three twenty-three says, "For all have sinned and fallen short of the glory of God." Romans six twenty-three says, "For the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life in Christ Jesus our Lord." B, B stands for Believe in Jesus Christ. This involves believing that Jesus is God's son, that He lived a sinless life, He died on the cross to pay up the penalty for our sins, and He rose again on, from the, the dead. John three sixteen says, "For God so loved the world that He gave His one and only Son, that whosoever believes in Him shall not perish but have eternal life." Finally, C, confess that Jesus is our Lord. This means publicly acknowledging your faith in Jesus Christ as your personal Savior and committing to following Him as the Lord of your life. Romans ten nine through ten says, "If you declare with your mouth, Jesus is Lord, and believe in your heart that God raised Him from the dead, you will be saved." For it is. For it is with your heart that you believe and you are justified, and it is with your mouth that you profess your faith and you are saved." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Mr. Alright, thank you. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I know that we have another executive session. I'd request, unless you have questions for department heads, thank them all for being here, but maybe dispense with the department head reports.
Okay. Anybody got anything for department heads?
Nope.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So this is one legal issue? Alright, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we go to executive session to discuss one legal litigation issue.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Lively. All in favor?
Alright, thank you.
No final action has been taken and authorized to sign an affidavit stating that, um...
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nix, second by Commissioner Brazel, all in favor? Unanimous, murder.
I make a motion we adjourn.